Agenda tonight. So, I am welcome again. Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please? Ms. Davis for.
Trustee Porter, present. Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
How is three here?
Mr. Robinson, absent.
I don't know where he is, but he asked for permission.
Well, I don't.
Anyway, when you guys.
He already said here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is that the following?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the proceeding of justice.
Good evening, Ms. Lyons.
There are no individuals inside of this.
Like you do what I was saying. All right, so tonight, again, so we've said this privately, but publicly, we have a different agenda than what was originally sent to you guys on Friday. It did post it accordingly. We made changes before the 48-hour deadline, but we added the swearing-in of new police officers. So, the background came back and plenty of time for us to add it to the agenda, and so we said wind down. So, that's why that's the biggest difference in the agenda. So, tonight, we have Officer Munoz. His name is Officer Jerry Munoz. So, please join me in welcoming Police Officer Jerry Munoz to the Village. He is joining us from the Hampshire Police Department as a lateral transfer with over 28 years in law enforcement experience. He graduated from Aurora West High School and earned an Associate Applied Sciences and Criminal Justice at Wabazi Community College. He was also previously employed with the College of DuPage Police Department and the Camden Hills Police Department. His extensive experience as a bicycle officer, field training officer, evidence technician, forensic photographer, firearms instructor, traffic and/and traffic and accident reconstructionist.
Yes.
He is also certified in crisis intervention, which is good because we probably need that up here. As a police officer at the College of DuPage, he researched and authored and implemented a new 12-week field training program. Officer Munoz is here tonight with his son Tyler and daughter-in-law Emily, although I feel like there's way more people here. So, after he gets sworn in and then he has to hop on one leg and sing his favorite song, he can introduce us to everybody. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Pan. We can wait if you want. Since your call, we can. I mean, I want this to be as special for you as possible. We can move on with the agenda. Okay. So, are you? Are you? On to the proclamation, and that's definitely the board, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll just move on with our agenda, and then we'll call an audible when everybody's. Okay? Sorry, guys.
We don't need to.
Trusty Coe and trusty, uh, trusty Porter, you have to come back on. All right, so we have another proclamation. Just, uh, we're gonna do a proclamation, so don't bring back all your stuff, because I'm sure there's gonna be more photos, because you're gonna be here for a long time. We're gonna make, we're gonna do a proclamation for metastatic breast cancer Awareness Day. And so, October, I'll just, I'll read this. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, let it be known that in the Village of Hampshire, we are pleased to, uh, to recognize and observe October 13th, 2024 as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and hereby recognize Metaviver and the hashtag Light Up NBC National Campaign. Whereas breast cancer is most common type of breast cancer among women in the world and is the second-leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States, with more than one in eight women and one in 833 men in the United States being diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, with an estimated 313,510 Americans will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when the, when breast cancer spreads to other part of the body, including bones, lungs, liver, and brain, and has an average life expectancy of two to three years, regardless of early detection, approximately 30% of stage 0 to 3 breast cancers will return as stage 4. An estimated 42,780 Americans will die from breast cancer in 2024, equal to 117 women and men per day, with 98% due to metastatic breast cancer. And whereas, because the pink ribbon is well-known and representing the fight against early breast cancer, but is not exclusive of stage 4, metastatic breast cancer awareness tri-color ribbon, therefore includes teal, pink, and green. Teal portraying healing and spirituality, green representing the triumph of spring over winter, life over death, renewal, hope, and immortality, and the tin, the, the thin pink overlay signifying that the cancer originated in the breast. And whereas the metastatic breast cancer affects all races and socioeconomic classes, with Caucasian women seeing slightly higher incidence rates of breast cancer, and the mortality rate for black women with breast cancer being 41% higher than that of Caucasian women. And breast cancer being the leading cause of death and cancer-related death for Hispanic women. And whereas, I'm almost done, there is a global hashtag Light Up NBC campaign on October 13th every year to illuminate 115 landmarks in the metastatic colors of teal, pink, and green throughout the world, bringing awareness to the disease and honor to the daily number of 115 lives lost to NBC. And, uh, the day will culminate in a virtual broadcast of the hashtag Light Up NBC Live to commemorate the landmarks lighting around the country and sharing inspiring stories of metastatic breast cancer community and help raise funds. Now, therefore, I, Mike Reed Jr., President of the Village of Hampshire, do hereby proclaim October 13th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the Village of Hampshire. So, I really appreciate.
Can I say a couple?
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Can you introduce yourself to the board, please?
I'm Lisa Mayer. My husband Vince and I have lived here for 20 years. We have three daughters, adult daughters. One is Harley Mayer, and our son is Vincent Mayer. And, um, I'd just like to thank the Village President, Mike Reed, and the other board members for recognizing October 13th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. This is the third year that Hampshire has done this for me. We moved here 20 years ago from South Elgin because of the great school district and the small community. Have you ever heard of metastatic breast cancer or stage 4 breast cancer before? You probably know somebody that has breast cancer or someone that is now in remission. You might know somebody that died from breast cancer. They died from NBC for stage 4 breast cancer. On October 20th, 2016, I received a phone call from my lung doctor who told me I had metastatic breast cancer. I had never heard of it, and within the next week, I would have multiple blood tests, PET scans, CT scans, a second opinion in Chicago, and a chemo for it put in. I never felt alone. A mammogram two months before I was diagnosed with NBC showed nothing. The breast cancer had traveled to both my lungs, my stomach, my spine, and many lymph nodes. I was told there is no cure. The average lifespan is two to three years, and I was 48 years old. I had chemo every Friday for six months when I wasn't sick or in the hospital from it. In April 2017, my PET scan showed no active cancer. I thank God for that. I was put on a hormone blocker and another drug to stop the cancer from coming back. That drug is now used as the first-line treatment for early-stage breast cancer instead of chemo. I have been advocating for myself and others for the last four years. If you are going to donate to breast, to a breast cancer cause, please think about donating to Metaviver. This organization gives 100% to research grants to find new treatment options and a cure someday for NBC. As a state captain for Metaviver, we are having the only Chicago Land Be a Hero Fun Run next Saturday, October 12th, at 10:30 a.m. in Clayne Field, to raise money for stage 4. And I will be giving some copies for you all. In case you'd like to participate, you can actually walk. You don't have to run that mile. And, um, I also advocate for my three daughters and my granddaughter. Please spread the word about metastatic breast cancer, so no one else has to receive a phone call saying you have NBC. Thank you again for recognizing October 13th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day.
Thanks, Mrs. Give this to you.
Okay.
This is your call.
Actually, can I get one big picture with you?
Yeah, as long as your camera doesn't break. Yeah, why don't we do, why don't we, if you have a minute, can we do the swearing-in? And then we can do it all at one time?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you for letting us call an audible tonight. Chief, you're up.
I, Station Michael.
I.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I, to solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution or affirm the form of the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution and State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Hampshire.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Now, faithfully discharge.
The duties of an office of sworn police officer.
And the duties of the office of sworn police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Need a tourniquet?
You have to make it official.
Which it was, since I see.
And he admitted right here. Can you sign the second copy, please?
Who are you gonna hear me tonight?
Uh, it's my son Tyler.
First time he's fit a badge.
His wife, my daughter-in-law Emily. Ryan, a friend, Mark, friend, Susan, this is the cousin of, this is my cousin's wife, he's no longer with us. My friend, uh, Robert, a business associate, and a friend Lena. And my good friend, Rich's wife, Janet.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for coming to this. I'd like to recognize the police commissioner is here, the police commissioners are here. Thank you for your work with this and everything that you do for the village.
Yeah.
And, uh, you could take, like, as many pictures as you want, with you and everyone addressed appropriately today, if you want.
Did they pause again in the duck table? That's who we're. Do that, and make a picture.
You gotta look closer together next time.
Watch out for the nose.
Let's go.
Everybody from the PD, come up. It's over here. There were more here. Actually, I need to go work.
That's very quiet.
Yeah. All right. And family, will you answer? No. Then the ground 13.
Yes.
We were in the one that's family first and then family in the other. And everybody that came with him, everybody, come on, let's, everybody that's here. Let's be best, we got something to go through for you. This shows he's loved, that's important. Squish it, everybody. Move it in.
There's more?
One more. Dave. Come on in. Join the ride.
That's what I was saying, let's get this chair. Oh, you're gonna be. Oh, so we keep up again?
All right, so, uh, we have one left. Proclamation, mayor, for the Friday.
Yes.
And then we can get on with our, and then everybody who came for a swearing-in or proclamation is free to leave unless you wanna wash.
Did you take your mom with all of the bus? Somewhere. Yeah, just have us in there.
Thank you, thank you.
So, you wanted to take one with your mom?
Do you wanna, do I go for a, or something?
Oh, we've got our kills.
Go in front of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to get it, you told us, and they can fix it, we know, but I'm ready. So maybe you may all go to the bathroom.
Thank you. Thank you.
All these.
Me too.
Nice to meet you.
It's a good, it's a good career for you.
I didn't bring any with me. I didn't expect to have any on, well, I'll give you a call. Thank you. So, uh, now, before you, now that we found a spot, you have two sets of meeting minutes. We did dig into the meeting minutes, and there was only one motion made for that September 5th meeting. So, the meeting minutes before you reflect is best, uh, according to the tape, as accurately as it happens. So, um, before you, you have two sets of minutes, from the 5th and the 19th. Please review them both at this time, and we can discuss, you know, either minutes, and then we, I'll make two separate, entertain two motions.
Just a clarifying question. I did watch the last meeting on, uh, the recording of it. I know that there were suggested changes to be made to the 5th. Was there not a motion to pass with the changes as amended?
No, we, we motioned to table the minutes to, to, to verify that they were accurate.
Understood.
Just based on the motions and the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay.
So, what, what Mole, or Mr. Con has learned is that, uh, never use a consent agenda again.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Your son was at one of the meetings, but not all.
Oh, man, did he get credit for being at two?
He got credit for two, and I couldn't remember which one he was.
He was at the one on the 5th, but not the 19th.
Okay.
See? That's good. That's good.
Okay.
Is he available before the start of this one?
We take it, yeah.
On the, uh, on the 5th, and I know this was part of it, because there was confusion on the consent agenda, and believe there were two motions, one to approve the use of a consent agenda.
Absolutely not.
There was not?
No, that's why, that's why I got tabled last time, and then went back and looked. We had one motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, we did a temperature check of whether or not anybody wanted it removed, but we didn't do an official motion.
Correct, correct. And that's what was confusing last time, which is why they got tabled.
Understood.
And that's the only reason I knew that that answer.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I know it was discussed, I couldn't remember if we motioned on it.
Right, and that was the confusion, which is why we tabled.
Okay.
Are we gonna do these separate?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we're on the first one there.
So, are there any changes to the 5th? Are we, are we feeling good about the 5th?
Feeling good.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 5th.
So, move.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oppose? Okay, now we're on to the next set of minutes, which are the 19th, is the 19th.
Which will then remove the Pledge of Allegiance, so that will be changed, then you're doing it, so that's one change. Number two, it lists trustee Aaron Kelly was absent, and then it says absent not.
That was the one change.
Oh, okay.
No, I mean, I think that change does need to be.
Yeah.
Number two is, is.
Under present, you have me at the end and say was absent, then absent says none, so just take me off that present part and add me to the absent part instead of on.
And then point four, second paragraph, I'm just capitalizing J.
Oh, yeah, we have to capitalize. We have to capitalize J.
Deserves.
You deserve to have your first name capitalized, Mr. Edwards. Thank you. We've been, we've been getting back at him by, by leaving his name lowercase for all these years, now we're gonna catch on to us.
All right. For number 10, there was no actual formal motion, but President Reed and the Geno Fest Parade was not gonna be there that particular date, and we kind of continued it to discuss at this next meeting. No formal motion, but it was. So, I think we should kind of add continue to next meeting.
We need that. Any other questions? We're not, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the changes as discussed.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? All right. Oppose?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Okay, moving right along. Next, we have two appointments. These are for the Downtown Beautification Committee. Lynn O'Shea has served with us for a long time, as has Christina Volter. Christina owns Christine Michelle's across the street. Lynn O'Shea is a longtime resident of the village. She also was president of the H2A, what were in Tuscany Woods, and they both expressed interest to continue serving on the Downtown Beautification Committee, and Mr. Swalwell, vehemently agreed with every appointment. So, does anyone have any questions about either of the two candidates? I will take separate motions for this, but I will entertain a motion to appoint Lynn O'Shea to the Downtown Beautification for a three-year term.
So, second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oppose? Uh, next, I will entertain a motion to appoint Christina Volter to the Downtown Beautification Committee for a three-year term.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments?
How long of a term for this one?
Three-year term.
Three-year terms.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Good evening, Mr. Hedges, with a capital K.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Um, at this time, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approved variance for 165 Arrowhead, uh, for gravel parking lot. Uh, this has been before the board previously, um, and Mr. Con will, uh, explain what we are.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. As Mr. Hedges said, this came before the board at July 18, 2024 Village Board Meeting. At that time, it was not approved by the Village Board. There was concerns about the gravel parking law. Going on on about 20. Um, based on that feedback, the petitioner has made changes to their site plan. I'm proposing to pave a 30-foot wide, 500-foot long asphalt driveway as a site that'll also be staffed, uh, to make sure there's not gravel coming out off the property. That, uh, the extent of the changes being made to the site plan for 165 Arrowhead Drive, the petitioner is here tonight. If there is any questions, the staff or the petitioner can answer. Um, but with that, I'll turn it over back to the board.
Do we have any questions? Discussion?
Because I was not president at the meet, that particular meeting, then. Um, understand that the asphalt then does address the issue that the board had. Where will these, um, items be parked? Because that's right by Arrowhead Drive. There's a future building, but I'm assuming, is it the whole thing that's gonna be gravel?
See the semi-circle? That's the gravel.
So, is that on page?
If you look to page 20 of the packet.
There's a.
22, okay.
20, well, I have it as page 20. Right before the, oh, well, okay, here's 22, as you say. I will, I will listen to Mole. Okay.
Where's this?
I don't see a semi-circle. I'm sorry, Mr. Hedges.
There is on the first drawing. On the top, right up here.
Oh.
But that doesn't, but the semi-circle description of the gravel lot doesn't match the second drawing, which shows the entire area behind future building to be a gravel lot.
Correct.
So, is that the gravel lot, the entire?
The entire property, with the exception of the asphalt driveway, will be, will be gravelled or truck parking. And the future building is just to show, but potentially will be though down the road.
I was referring to pitch 19 of your pack.
19.
Is, is that then, um, we talking semis? Semi-tractor trailers? I'm not real thrilled. I, I mean, I'm just really concerned to have, you know, this large of an area with semi-tractor trailers being there, um, that are just gonna be tarred. I mean, I understand it's property. I understand then the asphalt is gonna just be 100 foot by 30 to get them out. It's. I'm just, I'm just not.
You can speak. You're welcome to speak. I'm sorry, the petitioner, the petitioner is here.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, maybe I can hopefully, uh, set a little, set your mind at ease a little bit.
Just say your name, please.
Gabriel Mascoed. I am, uh, one of the partners with property that.
Can you do us a favor and spell that for the minutes?
Yes, uh, G-A-B-R-I-E-L, last name is M-A-S-C-O-T-E.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, to help you understand, the vehicles that are gonna be parked there are actually our own, it's our own equipment. So, uh, it is an over box of equipment that we are currently not using. Uh, it is equipment that, uh, we are a logistics hauler at 210 Flanagan Road. Just to, just to be clear, we have a logistics company at 210 Flanagan Road.
Okay.
Uh, we do not operate a lot of our flatbed or step-deck equipment in the winter months. Uh, for the purpose of, it's a little bit more difficult to, uh, operate that equipment because there's a lot of tarping and a lot of strapping that goes on, and inclement weather in these parts of the country and the northern parts of the country make it difficult, so we try not to operate that equipment. So, there is a lot of equipment that we need to, uh, get off of our property at 210 Flanagan Road, and we need somewhere to store it. The purpose, it's scary for you to look at and think that that whole property is gonna be gravel. The purpose then is, we need to start, at some point, we're gonna develop that property. Uh, that property right now is, is raw dirt. It's, that's what it is. Uh, for me to develop that, any of the contractors that we have brought up to this point have said. said, we need to come in, we need to grate, we need to bring in stone, rock, and all the preparation for when you do start the development of the property, that foundation's already built, that is already there. So to some degree, we have to do that in order to, if we were going to build on it, we would still have to prepare the ground in order to develop and put anything on it. Even if we were going to pave it or asphalt it, there has to be a base there to be able to put that on. What we're proposing is to for you to allow us to start that process now, for us to start laying that base foundation work now, allow us an opportunity for me to store that equipment there, and I will put in a 30-foot-wide, 100-foot-long drive where it'll be gated, it will not have public access. And I will also have it manned, and it'll be secured, so that any of my equipment that comes on or off of that property will be free of any debris that goes onto Arrowhead Drive and then therefore potentially going on the Route 20. And the reason that I say that is because, as you're going to learn in the coming weeks, I am in the process of trying to develop and upgrade and renovate the property at the hotel, which is also a property that belongs. So it is in my best interest to not have any of that debris on Arrowhead Drive or Route 20, because I am invested in developing the hotel as well, and we are proposing a restaurant on that property. So I I share that with you, I I'm with you, I share that sentiment with you. But I just want to reiterate that that's not the purpose, we want to come up with a solution, but I also have a problem and need to find a solution for it this time. Developing this property right now is second to renovating the hotel. I am working with Trevor Herman, with Mr. Mark Claus, I'm working with Gil and the Hampshire PD to, we are tirelessly working on on those efforts to renovate that, upgrading the fire alarm system at the hotel right now. We're actually integrating an entire new system to alleviate the pressure from the local fire department that is always having to respond there for these ghost false alarms, working with the officers to also mitigate that, to try and bring a new client, to to bring a new demographic to the area. So I I want to focus on that renovation before I focus on building something. Why build something new when there's something that I can improve now at the hotel? I hope that makes sense.
Okay. And how, I mean, it said, there was a piece that talked about a sunset. How long do you think you're going to be using it for storage like that?
You know, ideally, I think we were asking for the variance or or approving for a 36-month, is that correct, Mole? I think we were asking for a 36-month variance. I would also hope in that building costs to hurt level up a little bit within the next 36 months. I mean, I'll be completely honest with you, that has a lot to do with the reason why I'm not necessarily looking to go develop a a new brick and mortar building there. As you may have remembered, at some point, we were considering putting a truck wash there, and that was the direction originally that we had when we were going in. That's before Loves decided that they were going to put in a truck wash, and then we kind of backed away from that and kind of let them take the reins for that.
Do you think you're going to be, I mean, filling this area, or it's just a matter of you've got some equipment that'll be there for sure?
No, there's no way, there's no way I can fill nearly seven acres with equipment. I mean, there's just no way. But it'd be silly to invest in in preparing an acre or two of the ground.
Yeah.
If I'm already going to have the company out, if I'm already going to have these vendors out, everybody's told me the same thing, if you're if you're going to invest and do it, you might as well prepare everything now so that you're that much more ready for when you're ready to develop. So that's the whole purpose. I mean, that's a that's a large investment in there alone, developing that much acre area for building.
Thank you.
I have I have a question.
Disagree.
I mean, you made it clear that it's your equipment. You're not you're not looking to bring in other people's equipment and store it for multi-price or any of that kind of stuff with coming and going.
This is this is not going to be a a drive in and out, it's not going to be a monthly storage facility, it's not going to be a pay by-month parking, it's going to be my equipment with my MC number on it, my DOT numbers on it, that's the equipment that's going to be there. It's going to be our own equipment, not looking to renting spaces for the public, no.
No, the reason why I ask is because there was that story about that big parking lot that's going in Dundee, that's going to be month to month and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's a thousand parking spaces in in Dundee that that actually, that is effective now. I mean, that opened October 1st, so, yeah, yeah, that is, that is.
And I just want to, I know that, I know that I don't have an interest in in working towards something like that, since we've talked about that every once.
We don't want the liability, I personally don't want the liability that comes with that, I just don't. I I have my fair share, I'm spread out enough between the businesses and properties that we have, I I it's just not for me, so no, that's not what we're looking to do. That's also why it's going to be gated, and it's going to be secure. My only question or concern, you've already answered, so thank you, because I saw this is right behind the hotel, and I wondered what the owners of the hotel were going to think about this, but since you are the owner of the hotel. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other questions that I can help answer? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Can we just, the one question though, is the, there was a, the vote was five to one, do we know one person that was from those pieces?
I think the vote was three to one. Three to one.
From here for planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning was five to one.
Yes, the one commissioner did not believe the findings of facts were met by the petitioner.
Okay.
Are we ready to vote on this, guys? All right, I will entertain a motion approving a variance for 165 Arrowhead for a gravel parking lot, again, for his own equipment with a three-year sunset. So questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Poe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palistrini?
Aye.
Mrs. Vogel?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution authorizing Phase Three for Land Professional Services, excuse me, for the Land Professional Services Agreement for Public Works Facility in the amount of $385,000, bringing the total authorized amount to $683,045. Please note that on your agenda, that has changed from the original agenda, that right dollar amount, just the math there. You have in your packet an agenda supplement for myself. This this work will now take us into Phase Three, which includes costs associated with completion of bidding documents, drawings, specifications, construction manager's manual, bidding estimating during construction document phase. This will take us through February, when we'll be coming back to with the guaranteed maximum price, and we'll be asking the board for full authorization for the rest of the contract at that time. Have any answering questions? I will just add that we had a really productive meeting here yesterday afternoon for about three, almost three hours with Public Works and with Lamb and with Kluber, and we're getting right down to almost ready to have Ms. Lyons start helping us pick out colors. Things are really moving along very well.
Any questions?
It's for financing, so we're we've spent up to then $683,045 with the approval of this tonight, and some of that money is going to be coming from the the new 1% sales tax receipts that don't begin until April of 2025. So the money is in there to pay for it then?
I'm going to let Ms. Lyons through.
So we will be borrowing from public use funds essentially, and that will be returned to the public use fund when this project is bonded, and then sales tax will be used for the repayment of the bonds, if that explains.
Okay, then my other question is, is because we did receive a grant that is coming from a congressman, what was the total of the grant that was?
The amount that we were told verbally was $2 million, and frankly, I've I've not been able to get over the congressman for the last month to even confirm that.
We've read $2 million, and we were told $2 million, but they were also supposed to call, Congressman was supposed to call me.
Within 48 hours.
Within 48 hours, and I still have not gotten the phone call, but I did talk to another congressman two weeks ago and said that he knows that we got the $2 million, so.
They told us that at the same time, so we're, I'm I'm confident that we'll get it, but, I mean, you you understand that process better than we do, and I've not been able to get Congressman Raj's office to, it's that Washington office that we spoke to at the time, and they, I guess they're in session, because they haven't returned a call, but the local office just keeps saying, well, I'm Washington, call your county.
All right.
For over a month now.
I I would suggest.
He does continue, I'm sorry, he does continue to have press conferences all the time and announce these projects, so I'm I'm confident that it's coming, but.
In full disclosure, they really tried to get me to go to this mayor's meeting the first week of school, like the first day of school, he had this town hall, Rajah did, and every one of his staff members called and tried to convince me to come, and I said, I really like you guys, but I like being married more, so like, so like, the first day of school was not, was just not going to happen. So I don't know that they were going to announce it there, but like, I don't know why every member of his staff would have called and said, hey, we really want you to be there. Normally, normally, I would have gone, but I just, I couldn't make the schedule work full disclosure. So I don't know if they're making making us wait because I made them wait.
Absolutely. Clearly, we get the grant, and and you know the timing on that too, with Mayor and I know by next March.
And this is my concern is because, I I mean, my office, a grant was given and awarded, well, I shouldn't say awarded, it was selected by the congressman, and it was for a certain amount of money, and the appropriations committee gave it zero. So that's my concern, because, you know, for whatever reason that was, we have a group that's not happy that they got zero from it, and we have nothing in writing that's con, so that's why I'm.
So this does not count on that $2 million, because clearly it was not equipment.
Okay.
But it will certainly displace the funds that we are planning to to village funds that we're planning to spend, if we do get the grant, it clearly displays those funds, that'll replace, reduce our cost by $2 million.
Okay.
This project isn't, for lack of better terminology, this project isn't dependent on the grant, but it would really, really help.
I I understand that, and as long as it was here and to discuss, I just wanted to raise that, in that you, they're not, they're out of session for the next month, the entire month of October, so if anybody's saying that they're not there, they're there. So I would I would strongly urge them to find out, because we'd like to see, because that amount that is presented or that we give, that is listed, is not necessarily what was approved. And the other comment then is that because they have a continuing resolution, they have not voted the appropriation amount yet, and that could continue, and that right now, they've just approved a continuing resolution to December 20th, which means we won't get any money then, you know, that's the earliest that it it would possibly be approved by the Congress, both House and Senate, and then it would move then to, if, then the money is awarded, and it could take about a month from there. So just to kind of give an idea of when money will actually kind of start to flow a little bit, but.
We'll take it whenever it comes.
Yeah, so I just want to stress then, find out an amount, and if you are having difficulty with that, ask me, I will do what I can to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are we planning on bonding for this, Ms. Lyons?
We'll be starting that process very soon, because it's about a six-month process.
Any other questions about this? I'll entertain a motion authorizing Phase Three for a Land Professional Services Agreement for the Public Works Facility.
Did Mr. Kelly have a question?
I did, I'm sorry. I I promise we can discuss it.
I move, I move then. Second.
Awesome. Mr. Kelly, apologies.
So I'm looking at the the adjustment, the owner contract Phase Three adjustment, which I thought was interesting, that it's not a invoice, it's listed as almost like a change order.
It's specifically not a change order, it's Phase Three.
Well, it says Phase Three Adjustment, and the adjustment is what makes me think it's different than an original Phase Three, that they're adjusting Phase Three. My my question is, and it's just from lack of knowledge, so maybe Mr. Coe, Trusty Coe would know, 365,000 of this is for bidding documents, drawings, and specifications, so just for the design work and the bidding docs and the plans, it's $365,000, a lot for that type of.
No.
No.
First single building.
Yeah, I don't know if it's blueprinted yet, but they're going to.
This essentially is almost almost 95% of the architect's work, the buildings for the project.
Okay. So after this, there's no more, there shouldn't be much, if any, cost dealing with drawings, blueprints, designs, any of that.
In fact, this this includes some of the bid packages that'll start going out early spring. We expect to be in the ground as soon as the weather breaks.
Any other questions? I do have first and a second on the floor. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palistrini?
Aye.
Mr. Colton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
With that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution waiving bidding requirements and approving a contract with H&amp;H Builders, Inc. for a wastewater treatment plant door replacements in the amount of $26,700. You have an agenda supplement in your packet to get in on page 41 for Ms. Lyons, or if you'd like to explain this.
I think the agenda supplement is pretty self-explanatory, just if you're confused by the analysis section in the in the center, each of the three companies that provided quotes for the door replacement, those were all for three doors. So we only had $21,000 in the budget for door replacement, so we're going to do a little bit of swapping of expenses from other line items in order to get two of the doors replaced. So $40,500 or $40,050, which is the lowest bid divided by three times two, is the amount that we're asking you to authorize. And Mark has prioritized the doors and is leaving out the prairie lift station door in favor of the non-pot building and the Harmony pump station.
Any questions about the 22 by 28 insulated glass doors?
Who's little bit?
H&amp;H. In Nando Dats.
What was her, Lori, do you know what their total was right offhand?
The total for the three doors was $40,050.
I mean, what, H&amp;H came in versus Larson?
Page 41 or your bag?
All three, it was $40,050, Larson and Larson, $41,522, and Bowler Construction was $50,600.
Things too far have basically $500 lower than Larson.
And so you were just saying two doors, but this is for three doors, correct?
The the bids are for three.
Right.
But we we only had, you know, like, that's double what we had in the budget. We felt like we could find $26,700, which is for two doors.
And that only puts us like 5,000 over the budget.
Correct, exactly. And we went back to H&amp;H and said, can we scrap door opening number three? If you look at their quote, they actually identify, you know, the various doors, and they said yes, that they would honor the $26,700 for two doors.
This is going to put the streets department, I don't want to say the deficit, only to do the two versus the three?
Uh, this is the till abuse department, but no.
They're, they're.
Those funds will be, because Lori's sever will cut somewhere else.
No, I was just, I wanted to make sure that like we're.
The door's not going to fall off or anything.
That we're not. My only, my only concern with all this, door frames to be foamed in place. You ever put a metal door, they're heavier than HD double hockey sticks.
No, so we took the alternate that says that the frame will be slushed with concrete.
So then added.
That that added $600 to.
Get better with that.
Yep, yep.
Ms. Lyons, if I can ask, because the H&amp;H Builders was the only one that broke the doors out for each one.
Yes.
With that, then, we don't really know what the breakout would be for the other two.
We don't.
Do they still come out as the lowest bidder?
So so we thought if anything, we only went back to H&amp;H, they were the lowest bidder for the three doors.
Okay.
And our thought was, you probably, you know, if anything, the cost per door would go up because you're doing less work, you know?
Okay.
So we did not go to the other, in, okay, full disclosure, we did not go back to the other vendors.
Okay, but they were the, they were the lowest bidder.
Well, we're, I'm I'm still concerned about what's behind door number three. We're confident that door number three is going to be okay.
Yes.
For another year.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion waiving the bidding requirements and approving a contract with H&amp;H.
Motion moved.
I have first.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Ms. Colton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's five zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a text amendment to section two dash one dash. And, excuse me, section two six one dash ten of the Hampshire municipal code regarding no parking on Kelly Road. Um, you all recall a rather, uh. Long discussion we had about this a few weeks ago, two weeks ago. Um, I think there was a. The, the largest concern I think was this be safe. Kelly, Kelly Road has a lot of traffic now. In fact, uh. You'll notice that there's no speed limit reduction in this. And that's because we're going to actually do a study. Uh, we're, we're gonna have EEI, she bought it for us five years ago for another, another stop sign and we never used this. So now they have the equipment. We're gonna actually do a traffic study and determine what the traffic count is and the speed limits on Kelly Road now. There's so much more traffic with Prairie Ridge now open, Prairie Ridge North, and also the kids coming from the high school, that, that's the direct route right to high school. So, uh, Kelly, and Kelly Road is most of you know, has almost no shoulders in that section. Um, so what we're doing is putting a park zone in. We have two other park zones. Uh, Jesse Kelly, you know where you are. Um, and we have another one over by outside of the park. Uh, this will be a park zone, which will actually reduce the speed limit to 20 miles per hour in the park zone. And we're also adding, I believe Dave's adding, uh, 22 no parking signs along that area. Uh, which was a concern of the resident who was here at the last meeting as well. So those are the two things we're doing now. We'll be coming back to you probably later after the traffic study and asking for overall reduction of the speed lim-. Speed limit right now is 50 miles per hour on Kelly Road all the way from Ketchum to, uh, to Harmony. So those are the two main things we're doing.
How long would you think it'll take for the traffic study and strike piece on that?
Um, probably, we'll probably have it started within two weeks and probably done within three or four. Yeah, I think we, we brought it for seven days.
So theoretically, we could have the speed reduced before it gets snowy.
Sure.
Awesome. That's cool.
Well, and it's going to bring the speed limit down to 20 now.
No, I'm.
Just try the park, but just, just that area.
Understood. Any other questions?
I do have a question actually, um, for the executive director of the Park District here.
Oh. Uh, by the way, uh, executive director Schraus here from the Park District, if there are any questions.
The Schraus, the park that's on Kelly, the property, does it, does the far east side go all the way to Marnie Drive? Like across the street from Marnie Drive?
The far east side? I'd have to look.
Goes all the way to the corner.
It goes all the way that residence sits there, but I don't know where Marnie Drive is.
It's all flat grass, the corner.
Well, I, I understand. What I'm trying to understand is if that, if what's being allocated to the park district that was talked about last week goes. Like if I'm on Marnie and I'm dead end into Kelly, am I looking into the park from there?
Yes.
I don't even know where Marnie is.
Okay, that, well, that's where we're talking about ending the no parking and that, that's why I'm asking is. If the park goes to there or even a little beyond. Is there a reason that we can't do it from Harmony all the way to Oak Grove Drive so that it extends beyond the park? Cause.
What?
The no parking on Kelly Road.
The no parking will be all along.
I thought it just.
He said one two sides then.
Yeah.
One at, one at, one at the other end.
If I may jump in, so Marnie, Marnie Drive is the end of our jurisdiction, as Ms. Lyons was saying. Everything east of, um, Marnie Drive is Township Road.
Right, but here's what's gonna happen. If we don't have an intergovernmental agreement or something with the township from that point forward and the park is right there or beyond. Everyone will just park at that end of the park on Kelly Road. Negating what we're trying to achieve before it, causing traffic issues there because it's within a quick walk to the park. I think that in watching the video, I thought it was a really good discussion. Safety is a big concern. I, I'm not disagreeing with what we should do. I'm just saying. I don't know that this solves it if we don't work with the township to extend it to.
We definitely discussed that with the highway commissioner. And, uh, but I would tell you that most of that ditch is not parkable. Um, as Dave said, people will drive in a ditch even if they get stuck.
Right.
Most of it, most of it, there's only probably 50 feet where you could even park. Where you could get, because it's such a culvert there.
For the whole of Kelly Road.
Most of Kelly Road, slightly, yes. But we will talk to the highway commissioner and see if he's. They've already talked about this, the speed limit being the same all the way along and reducing the speed limit from 50 down to 45 or 40. Uh, but we haven't not talked about.
The township has been fantastic to work with, especially over safety stuff. They're always on the same page. Cause we, we, in a lot of cases, I mean, well. You know, there are residents, are there residents too. And so like, I mean, we have a great relationship and staff works real well.
Well, I'm not, I'm not thinking that the township wouldn't do this. I just feel like this isn't. Potentially solving what you're trying to solve for. And the very next one of a park zone. If we only have jurisdiction to Marnie Road. And the park goes either just a little bit beyond or right to Marnie, you're gonna have people going 50 right to. Where the park is and then slowing down real quick in that 20 mile per hour or something.
I would just say our use this time is just going to be where that lot is and in that area. That, that's too far distance for people to walk from that beyond Marnie if I'm looking at the map. So our use is going to be on the west side right now. So when we have, when we get to the point, it'll be a while before we, a couple of years before we have, go through the master plan process. But that's when I think I would be more, where's the access and there'll be a second access that, and that entire plan. Would probably be at the time, definitely to look at that.
What Ms. Schraut told us now is it's just gonna be practice really for two age groups, right? So mostly drop off at 14 age.
Yeah, totally understand. I just know if we're passing an ordinance to solve an issue, I wonder if we're solving the issue yet or if we are gonna be back here talking about it again.
Well, we won't be with the highway commissioner.
Well, we wouldn't, I mean, unless they just pass it on their own, I guess.
I think they run the blue one.
Governmental agreements usually, if we're doing a park zone, we would have to have something lieutenant as well, right?
No, we wouldn't have to. If they, if they just want to put park, no parking signs up like you suggested, they wouldn't have to.
Understood. I'm, I'm playing the tape through to our next motion on a park zone for a slow 20 mile per hour. And if the park extends beyond our.
I don't believe, I don't believe that it does.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking, if it goes past Marnie Road or not.
Because where we, where we're showing the signs, Dave, Dave knows where our jurisdiction is and those are all in our jurisdiction.
But there are two that show beyond Marnie Road. There's a park zone ahead and a park zone. And, and, and that's, that's why I think he's saying too, because if we just go to Marnie, there's two more. Signs there. If those are supposed to be signs, it's in green in a big box. So I thought though.
We, we could do one of two things. If you'd like, we can withdraw this, which means well, it'll be at least another two weeks where we're getting, or I can work with the highway commissioner and try and get this done, which is what I said I would do earlier.
Yeah, I'm confident, I'm confident the staff will work this out with the highway commissioner and, and if agreements are needed and that kind of thing, the staff will bring it back. I mean, like I said, the township works with us and they work with our, our public works guys all the time. On, on signage and, and all of that. I mean, they're. I, I would be more concerned if, I would be more concerned if we had a bad relationship with the township, which we don't. So whatever, I mean, I'm confident the staff figures this.
You're authorizing the signs if, if we can't put a couple of them up yet, we'll have to wait on those, but we'll put the ones up that we can.
Or if the township wishes to put up signs on our behalf on their property, they, they sort of, they can do so. And then we'll work the agreement out.
And, and the diagram on page 53 then, all the little. Designations of where all those signs are that go up to Marnie Road.
Yeah.
Those are in red, like a little square. And then I'm assuming then that the, the park zone ahead. Things, it doesn't show signs for them, but.
Well, that's the green, that's the green, where the arrows are, those are the green. So those are the signs that they're talking about park zone ahead and the speed and the, and the red dots are the no parking signs.
Okay.
It doesn't signify the color.
And it's just, there's, there's only just so many, there's only so much room.
Nope, I get it. And, and then, but the fact is, is, is what the park district said then, is that the only park we're looking at is the one that's going to be on the west side. Of Harmony Road. So it makes sense, they're not going to be parking way down beyond Marnie to be able to get to here.
West side of Harmony Road.
It's the west side of their park, not of Harmony. So the park is all here. This part of the park.
Well, the park's on the north side.
Of Kelly on the east side of Harmony Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, but.
I am, I am as well.
But if, but if the staff, if we do need to make changes, the staff will listen.
Let, let Mr. Hendrick hear it. That's what I'm saying. Please.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion approving a text amendment to two six one of the municipal code for the no parking signs on Kelly Road.
So.
Second.
Questions, comments? Uh, do this tax amendment, so I have to do roll call, correct? Please, roll call please.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Ms. Colton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'll entertain a motion approving a text amendment to two four two of the municipal code regarding park zones on Kelly Road.
So.
Taken. Questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Park, can you call the roll please?
Ms. Colton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Five zero.
All right, now for everybody's favorite time, it's staff report time. We have building reports and the engineering report. Mr. Paulson has been waiting patiently for all of the questions that you might have. Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Yeah. Hello, Professor Reed.
He sounds very excited. Just as excited as Jimmy looks in person.
Hello.
Hello.
I'll just want to point out one thing.
Absolutely.
First note on safe routes to school, we did get through a hurdle with IDOT and we have scheduled the public information meeting. It'll be October 24th. From five to seven at Village Hall. We'll be here with copies of the plans and a couple of, uh. Staff members prepared to discuss it with anyone who comes in and taking, uh. Taking comment from anyone who wants to come in and look at the plans.
Is the purpose of that to give the community an opportunity to propose adjustments to the plan?
It's part of the process of getting the states re-fired.
Yeah, it's part of the process, but if people have, you know, objections to say a portion of, of what's on their. Their property, if we can make adjust, you know, reasonable adjustments and still make the sidewalk work, we can. Uh, that's the purpose of taking the comments. Obviously if someone says. You know, they don't want sidewalk in front of their property, we, you know, we can't gap the sidewalk in front of the property, but. Yes, it is to take, take their comments into consideration if they have specific concerns. Maybe they want to save a certain tree or something like that.
So what are the, what are the final steps then, Mr. Paulson? We've got the public information meeting. Where do we go from there? When do we break ground?
Uh, we're still hoping for, uh, next summer for, for breaking ground, yes.
Well, but what are the next steps? Like from, from October 24th to next summer, what are the things that have to happen?
So after the public meeting, there's a two week, uh, period. Uh, where people can submit written comments after the public meeting. After that, we package those up, respond to them, send that to IDOT. And in addition, we're still waiting on the environmental and cultural clearances from IDOT. So, you know, once we receive those. Then we can move forward with the, uh, the final design documents and start and put together the bid package.
Thank you.
So who I yell at for picking a date that I can't be here?
For, for the public hearing?
Yeah, for the public information meeting.
Uh, I guess you can yell at me if you want.
No, I'm not gonna yell at anybody. I'm just asking.
Didn't really think you'd do that.
No, I'm gonna be at Metro West. But you, you work too though.
Have a candy.
Now you can worry about it.
I mean, neither one of us really had to be here for this hearing, but.
But no, I'm kidding. You get all defensive.
I wasn't sure if you were kidding.
We, we can hold a session just for you, Mike, as an extension of the public.
Oh, thanks for making me feel special. Any other questions or comments on the engineering report?
Yeah, for the park and reinstorm, sir, I thought we already had a grant. What is grant approval process expected to be finalized? I thought we got the grant.
I'll ask Lori to comment on that.
So we're, um, we're having to adjust the, uh, budget for that grant, um, based on input from D C D O. So we're still working on that.
What, what do you mean?
At the dollar, uh, just how to, how to get the budget to fit into there.
The budget was done, um, prepared by, um, Mr. Ray. And, uh, it was very general and they wanted it more specific, so.
Well, so they want line item.
Yeah, how many feet of. Storms or that cement, how many feet?
Okay. So is that going, is that costing us more engineering dollars to get that?
Um, uh, I'm replacing Mr. Ray and I'm gonna do.
It's costing us more, Lori. Dollars.
Have we, have we worked any on adding all the additional, uh. Taxpayers onto the white oak pond?
Oh, yes.
We plan to bring that back to you soon. We're drafting now.
We're drafting.
Gonna run by IDOT and bring it back.
No, that one doesn't have to go to IDOT.
Does anybody have any questions on the building report or the engineering report?
I just have one for the engineering report again, just back to that safe routes to school. The public information meeting, how are people invited to that? Is it just something gets put in the newspaper or are there?
There's publishing requirements by IDOT, so they have to, village has to publish, uh. At least 15 days out from the meeting and then again between three and seven days before the meeting. But, you know, if the village wants to do any other outreach on their, you know, various social media pages or whatever, they're certainly welcome to do that.
Are, are those properties that are gonna have sidewalk put in front of them, are they, just because it's gonna affect their property, are they like given an actual invitation to it?
Uh, that's not a requirement, no.
Okay.
And then, um, under Prairie Ridge, it looks like we're going to have guests on the 17th. Is that accurate? It says acceptance for neighborhood are targeted for 10, 17 village board meeting.
Yes, so we're preparing the pa- paperwork on that as, as is attorney Vasselli. They're also going to be, uh, three letter of credit reductions for other neighborhoods on that board meeting. So it'll be a lot of. Of crown business on some of the items they've been working over, over the last, uh, couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Paulson made a work for tonight? I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. And thank you for the awesome building report, Mr. Khan. You get up, you get to run away. Okay, up next is accounts payable to personnel. In the amount of. No dollars. No dollars. Okay, so I'm, I will entertain a motion to table indefinitely the accounts payable personnel.
So move.
But if the comments are concerns, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Pros? Awesome. All right, next. The accounts, uh, the accounts payable, the amount of $214,836, or, or $214,836 and 83 cents to be paid on or before October 9, 2023. Four. I don't know what year it is. Live in the past.
Can I ask what the real estate subscription is on page three of that?
No, you may not.
So that is, help star, if a database, a club for all properties are available for sale or lease. Um, it helps us to respond to intersecting noise, um, for the RFPs or RFI for potential developments. It's easy to gather that information, know, hey, this property on this, on Rock 20 is available, who the contact information is. Um, and for a source to compile all that data for us, uh, it's easier to respond to development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, page nine, sweeper repairs.
Uh-oh.
I was devastated to see the sweeper repaired for $9,600. What happened to the sweeper?
Sweeper had a couple of issues.
Okay.
Um, some of which was under warranty, this piece was not, I believe that this was related to the computer that, um. Operates the. Machine.
Puts it on idle. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a kind of.
But the record.
Part of it was warranty work. Um, there was, there was additional work done other than above and beyond.
I wasn't, I honestly didn't know, cause I don't remember how many years ago. Three.
My.
Yeah, no, so it was one of, uh, trustee Paul Strini's first motion.
Yes.
And now she gets to add emotions.
I am emotional.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable.
So move.
First.
Aye.
Second, questions, comments and or concerns? Are you gonna be okay? Okay, all right.
Uh, a tissue though.
Thank you.
It'll be okay.
Ms. Park, can you call the roll please?
It's clean and, and I'm dirty.
Mr. Kelly?
What? Aye.
Mr. Matt? Thank you.
It's you.
Yeah.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Colton?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five, uh, set five zero.
Yes, it does.
Okay, awesome. Next, uh, business development commission report.
Next Wednesday, the ninth here at 6:30.
All right, very exciting. Any new business or other type of announcements?
New, old business.
Okay.
Or is, has anybody stepped forward to? Or has, has anybody stepped forward to relieve you of your parade lineup duties?
No, they have not.
Is that volunteer?
Santa can't volunteer.
He's busy with the reindeer and I forgot about the.
I, I did talk.
That's why I do it, so I get on everything else.
Partner and volunteered with him. Uh, he might be busy that night, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we have a plan B. I appreciate that.
Yes.
I do appreciate no one passed your motion, the last meeting as well.
Yeah, yeah, well, I guess, yeah, does it do, does that mean because we didn't pass the motion that he has to be a helper?
No.
He can't tell.
You're saying a lot of stuff for somebody that's not gonna be here.
That's true, it is true. All right, so I appreciate that, it's Senator Banks. And uh, we we will, we will set him up with all the tools necessary.
Special assistance, you still?
Mr. Colton? Yeah, we have volunteered.
Sorry. It's gonna be the best one yet. Uh, I have some announcements. Uh, homecoming week is next week, we're pretty excited about it. They're bringing back the parade, which is gonna be on uh, the sixth, which is Sunday at twelve o'clock. Um, uh, they are gonna follow the parade route completely this year. And there's not gonna be any traffic issues, Ms. Kelly, or there shouldn't be, because last year there was a lot of traffic issues. Turns out, when you go in the exit, when there's a football being going on, with kids walking around, seems like it'd be a problem. So they they understand that they're gonna follow the rules this year and it's gonna be a great parade. And they're gonna be decorating windows downtown and um, Hampshire High School is playing the Dundee Crown Chargers. So I have bet, uh, John Skillman, the president of Carpersville, uh, lunch over the winter.